Which is the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I've got a motion by Mr. Price.
Second.
And a second by Mr. Hama. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number four, which is the approval of the minutes from the July 2014 Planning Commission meeting.
My memory's not that good, but I'll make a motion.
You know, I did read through it. It looked pretty accurate to me. So we've got a motion by Mr. Price. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And I've got a second by Mr. Lundell. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That brings us to number five, which is public input. You know, I don't even think I'm gonna read that whole thing. Not if there's not anybody to read it to. You guys heard it enough. We'll just go to, uh, the discussion items, I guess. We got no public hearing either. And, uh, that brings us to the development plan, the memorandum of understanding.
Would you like me to go through those options I can? I think the commission is aware of this particular development concept. We've talked about it generally in the past. I mentioned in my staff memorandum that you all know that Mayo has moved to their new facility. The building is now vacant. Um, and I'm continually moving forward with the Economic Development Authority, with the input from Mayo, on getting a little bit further detail, uh, worked out on the particular development plan for this neighborhood. Including, as I mentioned to you in the staff report, did hold a meeting with a couple of representatives from Mayo. Uh, had invited with, I think, ten days' notice by letter, uh, those property owners who own property immediately adjacent to either one of the three homes that Mayo owns, uh, and/or the hospital building and/or the parking lot, uh, just south, on the southwest side of the entrance to the hospital. So we had a decent, uh, decent attendance. We met at 1022, uh, the 1022 home, uh, in this location. Had a nice informal conversation. I think we were able to answer a number of the questions that those immediately around the hospital had. Wasn't anything formal about it. Uh, we mentioned to them that, uh, this plan is still, uh, evolving at this point, that I'd be meeting with the Planning Commission, continue to meet with the EDA. I don't know that we'll go to any type of formal public hearing unless and until a recommendation comes to the council with respect to, uh, the possibility of vacating some or all of Floyd Street. If that is going to be vacated, there does need to be a public hearing before the city on, uh, city council on that. But that decision hasn't been made. But this particular plan that I included in the packet is, is really the development plan that evolved through a year or two of planning with, uh, Mayo and the Economic Development Authority. It includes the, uh, the public park area just south, uh, of the west entrance to the former hospital. Uh, that property that's currently a parking lot would be developed into a neighborhood park. It proposes, uh, up to six residential lots, uh, across the existing hospital building site, including the vacation of the eighty-foot portion of, of Floyd Street. And then it retains the three homes that Mayo owns as single-family homes, which they will move forward with, uh, with trying to sell in the open marketplace. So it's essentially the residential development concept that we talked about before. The one issue that you're aware of that's been probably the, the most discussed topic in this area concerns the number of lots and the potential vacation of some or all of Floyd Street. This particular option, uh, which includes six lots is the one that has always been talked about in the original concept plan, the one that I just showed you on the, on the first graphic. Proposes to reconstruct a new alleyway to serve properties, uh, to the north of the hospital building, as well as those, uh, residential units that currently back up to the, uh, the north end of the hospital building itself. Uh, in this case, with the, um, three hundred feet of property that exists on the hospital block and an eighty-foot right-of-way, uh, on Floyd Street, uh, there could be, uh, six lots created with sixty-three-foot frontages. The option that I didn't draw here was if all of Floyd Street was vacated and that eighty feet was added to the three hundred feet, uh, and there would be five lots instead of six, uh, they could be seventy-six feet. No magic really in these numbers. It's just what they are. That's all the distance we have. But we have talked about at the Economic Development Authority level and with Cannon Falls Housing Initiative, who's gonna have the right to purchase three of these lots. We have talked about maybe adding, no matter which number of lots we end up with, adding some additional width on the, uh, corner lot on the, on the west end of, of the site. So they wouldn't necessarily all have to be sixty-three feet. We could, you know, make adjustments from that. But in this case, again, if all of Floyd Street was, was vacated, um, there could be six lots of sixty-three front, sixty-three front feet on average, or five lots at, at seventy-six feet. Another option which includes the potential vacation of a part of Floyd Street and the retention of the alley to the north, but the incorporation of an alley north-south through the existing Floyd Street right-of-way, uh, would allow five lots of sixty-six feet and then an alley going north and south and east and west. There's been some conversation in the neighborhood about maintaining some type of, of flow-through traffic there. And we've certainly heard that, uh, from the neighbors, I think even from input from this group and others, uh, that they would like, uh, the opportunity to continue to have a traffic movement through that area, whether it's an, an entire street or something less, remains to be seen. But clearly, there's an interest, uh, from those around that neighborhood of, of retaining some type of north-south, uh, access through the Floyd Street right-of-way. So again, and this is just another, another option of, another way to look at this, five lots of sixty-six feet with, with two alleys. And that's not dissimilar from some of the existing originally platted lots in the community that had streets around all four edges of the block, but then a, a T alley. In this case, it'll be a T alley splitting between two blocks. So that's a little bit different. We don't have that. One other option without vacating any part of Floyd Street would be a five-lot option, which would go to original town-sized lots, uh, sixty-foot lot width, uh, in this case, uh, with five lots across the front. So again, in this case, there's no vacation of, of any part of Floyd Street, uh, but coming back with more of an original town concept in terms of sixty-foot lots, and in this case, five of them. And the other option that we've looked at is, again, not vacating any part of Floyd Street, but just coming back with four lots of seventy-five foot each. So again, the questions here are, do we look at four lots with larger frontages or six lots with narrower frontages or something in between, five lots with or without vacated Floyd Street? So there's a couple of options here. And again, as I pointed out to the, to the neighbors, and I wanted to, to remind the Planning Commission, this whole concept of the number of, of lots really was not initiated by Mayo. There's been some conversation that it's Mayo's advantage to have more lots because they're gonna sell them and they'll recoup, uh, uh, the revenues from those sale. The honest opinion is Mayo has never come to me and said, "We wanna maximize the number of lots here." They're open to whatever, uh, the city and the neighbors, uh, come to agreement with. Um, it's not necessarily a, a huge issue to them whether there's four or five or six lots. They want, at the end of the day, to be, to have a nice development plan. Uh, they want the city to, to, to be, um, comfortable with whatever that final plan is and hopefully the neighbors, uh, in the area are as well. So it's not so much a number of, of, of lots that's a critical factor for Mayo. But what we looked at on the city side, including the EDA, is Floyd Street right now, there are no utilities. There are no water sewer in Floyd. There's not a proposal to instruct, to construct water and sewer in Floyd. It's probably a forty to fifty thousand dollar cost to build a thirty-two-foot wide street curb and gutter, um, from Mill Street north all the way up to, uh, uh, through Floyd. There's a long-term maintenance cost, and the question is, do we really need that additional traffic option in that neighborhood? And, and so we've kinda looked at it from the standpoint of, yes, it does affect the number of lots, depending what happens with Floyd, but there's also a, a near-term and a long-term cost for maintenance and construction of this road for the city. So it's an opportunity for us to look at that. Is there right or wrong? What's the best? What's, what's, uh, least desirable? That's something that we're just looking for input, uh, from the Planning Commission tonight. As I told the neighbors and I said initially in my comments, this is kind of an evolving conversation, but we do need to move the plan forward and get a little bit more specificity, uh, to the final details. Uh, there, the council will be looking probably in the next, eh, maybe two months, month and a half, two months. Council has ordered a feasibility study for West Side Two infrastructure improvements, which include this area. We'll be getting some of that information back to the council, and then they'll have conversations as to what, if anything, to do next year, uh, on the west side. But clearly, that is part of this infrastructure program and something that we're gonna be interested at the Economic Development Authority side and, I think, from Mayo's side and what that, that decision is. But to kinda match with the schedule that the council will be looking at for infrastructure, uh, to kinda match up with Mayo's, uh, plans to demolish this building next year, uh, to get this ready for the purchase of the first of three lots by the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative next year for the building program, there's some decisions that we're gonna have to make over the course of the next couple of months. And I was just looking for, you know, your input tonight. So those are some of the options. I don't know if there's a right or wrong, but, uh, again, from the commission's perspective, uh, interested in just having some conversation tonight and some input. Uh, it's not necessarily binding input, but if you've got some directions, some concerns, some questions, some different ideas, now is the chance to, to talk about those.
I have one question. What's our ordinance on our site setbacks on those corner lots? Are we gonna restrict our building pad on those too much?
With, with the-
Something that we wanna take into account when we're doing this, 'cause if they take one of those long, spread-out ramblers-
Right.
You're gonna be messed up, and then you're gonna, you know, who knows who's, what they're gonna build in there, but-
Right.
You gotta make sure, you know, we should've done something up with what a building pad or a buildable area was with a dotted line in there or something, I guess.
Right. We're gonna have both, and, and we'll use this option, Dave, the four-lot option with the seventy-five feet. You know, that's, that's plenty of room even for, maybe not a long, long rambler. Um, but that's gonna give, uh, more flexibility in terms of the side yards if we're looking at fifteen to twenty-five foot on the side yard next to the street. So here, on the west edge of this lot, the east edge of this lot are the concerns that Dave's bringing up. And that's why if we go to, go to narrower lots, the reality is we're probably gonna have to, if we don't vacate any part of Floyd, we're gonna have it on both ends where we're probably gonna be looking for, uh, uh, more width, uh, on both, both ends of, of the old hospital site. Mayo hasn't requested any kind of covenants be placed on these properties, but I'll tell you, as a board member of the Cannon Falls Housing Initiative, we're looking at, at these lots because we do have the right to purchase three of them with an agreement by Mayo. So each of the next three years, starting next fall, uh, we've got the opportunity to buy these lots. These are infill lots, what I call infill lots. They're not like the lots that, that the housing initiatives have, has purchased, uh, since the start of that program. Those have been larger lots. The, the lots that we've built the last two homes on out at Union Court and the, and the home that we just started last week on Union Court, um, those, we've combined two twin-home lots into one, so they're fairly decent-sized lots. Uh, but they're more of a suburban kind of, uh, lot configuration. So we build a more suburban-type home. Here, we've talked about, in working with Mark Walter and the board, here we've talked about buying these lots. What kind of homes are we gonna build here, particularly if they're narrow lots, narrower lots? So that's a point well taken. And again, whether we do four, five, or six lots, uh, I agree that we're gonna have to carefully look at, at the two end lots in particular if we don't vacate Floyd, because, uh, the sixty-foot widths with a corner setback without a variance, uh, is gonna be a little bit of a challenge. Now, we expect here that we're gonna have, which we typically haven't had with the housing initiatives, we're gonna have, uh, uh, access from the rear in the alley. No matter which option that, that's pursued here, the east-west alley, uh, behind the hospital, north of the hospital, is proposed to be rebuilt, uh, blacktop etuminous alley. Um, it's in pretty tough shape. But that would be rebuilt and it would create access, uh, rear access to any one of these lots, whether it's four, five, or six. That's kinda good news and bad news. It allows narrower homes to be built when we're, when we're backloading the, the garages, but they are gonna be narrower homes. And the setbacks on a sixty-foot lot or a sixty-three-foot lot or a sixty-six-foot lot, the setbacks on the corner are a little bit more of a challenge. So we don't have a house plan yet, is the short of it, but it's, it's definitely an issue.
Well, if you don't wanna be sitting on those two lots, you gotta make them big enough to get a-
Right.
Reasonable-sized pad on there, I guess.
Right. And that's like I say-
You're gonna limit your, limit what you can put on there to a small split.
Right.
Which, I don't know, we should be keeping our housing stock up instead of low. It's better for the community.
Right, and the neighbors have expressed the same thing.
Yeah.
So I agree with that. And that's like I say, I, I can't speak for the neighborhood, but from everything I've gleaned, I think this would be the, the preferred option.
I, I think the, uh, guys that plow snow in the winter would agree, too.
Yeah, that's clearly the one that, that fits in. We, uh, as you said, the original town lots are sixty-foot in town, but if you look right around the immediate neighborhood of the hospital, we're finding a lot of-
They're all about four.
Seventy-two, seventy-four, seventy-five, seventy-six-foot lots, four homes per block.
Sell them for more money, I guess. Right? I mean, isn't that what they do? You pay for a bigger lot, don't you?
Well, I think it's goo-, it's a matter of degree in this case, Stan. I mean, I think, yeah. A seventy-five-foot lot is probably gonna command more than a-
It really looked to me like, when I looked at it, the four seemed to fit the, like, the surrounding neighborhood a lot better. Anything more would make that one section appear out of place, sort of. But especially with the idea of trying to cut Floyd Street off, I think too many of the people in those neighborhoods have probably been driving that street.
Right.
Get used to it.
Right.
I mean, if it were me, if I lived in that neighborhood, I would really rather come down Floyd instead of Dow to head over, you know, toward the west, because then I don't have to be so close to the ramps by the interchange.
Right.
Gives me some buffer, you know?
Right.
I don't know.
There's two houses on the east side of Floyd where I think you could only get to their driveway from Floyd, isn't that right?
Correct.
So how, if they did vacate Floyd, how would that work?
If, if this wasn't vacated, then they would just come off of the street?
Yeah, but if they did.
But if it, yeah, if it was vacated in a case like this, let's go to the original six lots. This house and this house would access off of this alley because the alley would be connected to the street. This house could be accessed from the alley or potentially from the front if it was a front-loaded house. This, this house, which is a hospital-owned house, would come off of that alley. There's an alley back there now. There's an existing alley back there now, or platted alley. Um, and we know that, that the existing detached garage over here would have access to that alley. So we would definitely need the alley to provide access to those homes that are there at present. So if we vacate, we know we've got an alley for sure. If we don't vacate and Floyd stays open, uh, the access is from the street, so.
Dave, I know we, uh, we asked the council about the timing of when the old facility would be taken down. Because that plays into part of our decision if we're going to do the West Side project.
Right.
Even if we don't do the West Side project and, uh, the school buys a lot to build on, there's still gonna need to be some rural urban work done, so.
Right. Right. Yeah, there's, uh, again, with, with, and Bill or Jake can comment on this, but we're, we're hearing from the city council in the last month or two as, as we look at West Side Two. Um, that's a fairly expensive proposition. And having done East Side One and, and West Side One already, there's some conversation now about the overall estimated cost to, to move forward with West Side Two. And I know that's gonna be, you know, a, a discussion of the council and, and whether they choose to go ahead with all of it or part of it. I guess what I'll be talking to the council about is exactly Bill's question. Bill's got the EDA hat on now, too, is, we're gonna wanna know, Cannon Falls Housing Initiative's gonna wanna, gonna wanna know, and Mayo's gonna wanna know, what's gonna happen, if anything, um, for West Side Two next year relative to properties around the hospital. So we'll have to, we'll have to see, but I'm, I'm guessing we're gonna know that before the end of the year, at least in terms of where the council's, you know, thinking is, once they see the cost. But we got some coordination issues. There's no question about that, to do this. Most, if not all, in favor or most in favor are feeling most comfortable with the seventy-five foot, the four lots of seventy-five that match up. Is that?
Yeah, I think so. What-
See head shaking, yes.
What's the deal with the, the other set that you had up there? It looked like there was almost some space between those lots. Is that something the city owns or is that for utilities or?
Which, which one are you looking at?
The one with the four lots. I mean, it seemed like it lined up a lot better with the existing lots. But if you look at the graphic-
There's a vacated alley here. I don't know if you're talking-
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah.
Up top?
Yeah.
All right.
It's a vacated alley there.
Yep.
Yep.
Yeah. I think the four would really match what's going on in the neighborhood.
The best?
I don't know what anybody else thinks, but it-
I was seeing head shake as you were talking, so. Unless I'm misreading that, everybody's kind of on the same page that, just in terms of land use, 'cause that's really what I'm asking you about and, and the lots. We'll leave the cost issues to the city council, but, um, your sense would be to, to make it fit what's there?
Yeah, I think so.
Leave the street through? That's fair enough. I mean, 'cause again, I, I don't think there's-
I think that we do what it takes for them, corner lots, so they're not sitting there in ten years and we're having this discussion again. That's what I think, so. We wanna make them available as fast as possible, and we wanna make them as easy to put a nice house on there. A nice house, not just a little split.
Would your sense be seventy-five on the, on the two ends or bump those up a little bit? Because you have to take them out of these two.
Well, I think our site setback is twenty feet, right? So you got twenty-
Plus you got ten on the others, you got thirty.
How, how wide was that alley?
You got your easement line around. Are we gonna do five-foot easements like they have out at Sandstone? Or are we gonna do a five and ten or a seven and seven? You know, without knowing some of that-
Right.
It's hard to-
I would say you're gonna, to, to put the easements aside, if, if we've got thirty feet of setback, including on a corner lot, um, twenty and ten, let's say. So that gives you forty-five feet buildable frontage.
Yeah, you, if you have forty-five feet, you can make it work. And then the two inner lots, you can get a little bit bigger house in there.
Right.
Yeah, there, the other possibility, too, might be to, uh, actually take those other two and make them a little bigger if you think you need to.
Because it, you could actually do, like, the one, you could have it enter, have a attached garage and have it enter off of Floyd rather than the alley, correct?
Yep.
And have your house go the, go the length of Floyd rather than go the other way.
Mm-hmm.
And put a false front on it.
It'd match the other access for the houses going up along there.
Can you do that also on the Dow Street?
Yeah. Well, at bo-, both ends, you could do the same thing. And it might give you a little bit more usable space in the nicer lot.
Right.
Or if we were gonna try to get five lots in there, you could shrink the two center ones a little bit, leave the two corner ones bigger, and then design it so that one faced Floyd and one face Dow that way to get a extra fifty thousand bucks out of there, or whatever you're thinking we're gonna sell them for.
Yeah, and that'll be Mayo's decision.
Right.
Yep. I mean, what, we, we, I might say we, speaking as a board member of Cannon Falls Housing Initiative, in, in our agreement with Mayo, we've already set the price, and our price is set not on market, it's set on what we can afford to pay. And so with three, if, if we go with the four-lot concept, three of the four, uh, will be reserved for the housing initiatives to purchase, and those prices are set. So Mayo will have one lot to sell if we go with the four lots at whatever the market will bear.
Yeah, and it's definitely what the market bears.
Right.
We're, we're not oh-seven, oh-eight right now.
Right.
Uh, yeah, I think four looks best.
Looks best?
With the neighborhood.
Okay. Well, we'll keep that consensus with us as we go back to the EDA and work through the, with Mayo and the, and the neighborhood as we go forward, and, and we'll just do some layouts, too, and kinda see what we're looking at. Because the housing initiative has the first right to select lots as well. And our biggest concern, of course, is the lot for next fall. Um, and right now, we're building the house for sale next spring, so. But we'll continue to work, then now that house is under construction. I think the footings are in and blocks should be done this week. Um, we can get some of Mark Walter's time, maybe, and, and start thinking about, you know, what, what might a home look like here in terms of a footprint. Okay? Good enough. Thank you. We'll move on to the next agenda item. Since our July meeting, I've had a chance to, oops. I've had a chance to go out to Sandstone with a representative from Goodyear County, uh, the city engineer, city administrator, director of public works, and myself. Uh, we're out there going through the, uh, the site again and working through with the city engineer. Uh, he's provided us with some additional information. It's not a lot of detail, but at least it's a, a pretty reasonable start, I think, to moving forward with some type of conceptual land use plan. What I'd really like to, to generate through Planning Commission, Economic Development Authority, and Goodyear County is not a final development plan, but to start narrowing down the, the field of options here. So then we can make some decisions about, um, do we, do we really wanna do some more testing of that area of, to test its ability to, to accommodate development? Because if we are, we're gonna have to spend some more money. We talked about that in July, that there's been a lot of money spent already that we haven't been returned, uh, that has not returned yet to the city. And we don't wanna keep digging a deeper hole, but at the same time, if we can kinda narrow out, narrow down the parameters here in terms of some, some land use ideas, then we can make some decisions about, you know, maybe testing some of the specific areas of Sandstone Ridge to decide whether or not there is a feasibility of doing some private development of whatever type, uh, in that area. So what we got from the, the city engineer, um, is John Oliver and Associates back, must've been two thousand and four, um, did do some, some soils work out there. And the areas that I included, that you have a graphic in your, in your packet, but the areas that I've highlighted in yellow are the existing lots in the Sandstone Edition, single-family, um, that showed near proximity to stable soils and bedrock. A number of the properties that showed that on Valley Court, those have all been built, okay? There haven't been any homes built out in this area on those lots. But there are lots that are showing a, a reasonable closeness to, to stable soils and, and bedrock.
There's one house up on top.
One house, yep.
Bury Robers' old house.
Yep, right there. So there's a few lots out there that have services that have soil conditions that are reasonably, uh, workable for, for new construction. So those are the lots. The rest of them didn't have that same characteristic, uh, in Sandstone. So that's, I think, a good, good piece of information. At least gives us some idea of soil conditions. The other thing that we learned... Moving back. And you've got this in your packet. It'll be a little bit easier to see the colors than you can here. But the utilities that were installed, uh, for the first phase of Sandstone, uh, s- some of those utilities really can't, realistically shouldn't be abandoned. And so what the city engineer is saying is, coming off of County Twenty-Five at, at the entrance to Sandstone, the sewer and water facilities in that alignment here, as well as coming from the Valley Court area and Twenty-Five there, which is just a sanitary sewer line, that those really are not gonna be abandoned, nor should they be abandoned. They're gonna have to stay there. Now, we have roads over the top of, of some of them, here and here, but not there. That's just coming up, uh, a hill. So we've got a, a utility corridor that's, that's gonna, in all likelihood, stay there. Whether the streets stay there or not is an open-ended question, but the sewer water gonna stay there. So it's a, it's an encroachment. It's a, it's a, uh, an existing condition that, you know, we have to recognize. And, and if this was all started over and, and everything was regraded, we'd have, uh, u- utility easements over those utilities. Maybe there wouldn't be roads there, maybe there would, uh, but they'd still, they, they kind of encroach upon the development. But they're there, and, and they're not gonna be leaving. There are utilities into the court, uh, on the east end. There's utility leads that, that go to the dead-end street going south, uh, in this location. And there's utilities that come through this inner area, which was gonna be developed for, uh, for some multifamily townhome-type developments.
Condos.
Condos. Those don't necessarily have to stay, those utilities. They don't have to stay. But the ones that do have to stay were, were identified by the city engineer, and that, and that's a, a limiting factor in terms of what, what might happen or what, what could happen out in that area. I took only that information, as well as looking at the existing topographic conditions there. I took only that information, as well as looking at the existing topographic conditions there, looking at some of the other information that I've got available through our GIS system, and just for purposes of conversation, took the city engineer's position and said. Maybe here's something we can start focusing in on and narrowing down to. The area in yellow, and you might want to look at your own maps rather than the overhead, the area in yellow on the west side, which have the some lots with better soil conditions. Right next to the existing utility line that's in existence, these areas, you know, those are platted lots, maybe with some further investigation, evaluation of the individual. Conditions there, maybe those lots are saleable and developable, maybe there is a revenue potential on some of those lots. We have an issue with the condition of the street, so there's going to be more expense with that, but the utilities are there and the soils are maybe workable, and maybe it's worth looking a little bit more closely into that to see if, in fact, those lots could be sold and some new homes built. On the Valley Court area, and I circled that in just a brown line. I told you before, there seems to be maybe some conflicting information about the soil conditions in that location. We've gotten some information in-house from prior engineers that indicate that that's not buildable area, Greg Isaacson in the past, and the recent passes indicated that no, it is. I need to nail that down to see whether or not any one of these lots potentially could be developed, if they could, good, because it's relatively easy to do in that location, so I'll nail that down as best I can through more conversations with Goodyear County. The existing parkland area here in these single-family lots, my view is we've got some topographic realities there, we've got one large owner, Realport LLC, that owns the balance of the property to the south and east of this parkland and those lots. My view is maybe what we could talk about from a planning perspective is just leave that as an urban reserve pending whatever happens down the road with whoever owns the balance of this property. I don't see any real need to do much in that area now, there's been a fair amount of excavation, there's a fair amount of topographic difference there, if we're going to just hold that for the future, that may be a reasonable proposition for us to consider. The multifamily area here, the condos that David mentioned, there's some street conditions in there that are poor at best, not certain about the soils. Maybe that's an area where if we really get serious about maybe some multifamily and/or some open space parkland development, that we consider that area for some further evaluation pending an investigation of the soils, et cetera. And maybe that cul-de-sac on the east end may be kind of a similar proposition, it was probably, I don't know, David, if you know, I'm guessing that it's single-family because of the neighbor. You know, but to me, I think that whole area, which is probably seven-plus acres, it's going to be split by this utility corridor and access to 25, I don't know if there's going to be access anywhere other than that to 25, I mean, that seems intuitively to make sense, if there's going to be access, I think we need access to 25 if we're going to develop up there. That's probably where it's going to stay, but the street conditions need to be corrected. But I think over here on the east end, kind of conceptually, some consideration of some type of multifamily, if soils allow it, and/or some type of park and open space, transferring it from the existing park over to the northeast end of the property, you know, seems to make some sense, at least in my view, so. It's a start, I don't know, I'm really interested to hear from David, David knows more about this property than probably any of us do. I'm not proposing that we spend any money at this point to do any more evaluation, but I think it's going to be helpful for Cannon Falls and Goodyear County to at least start reasoning what are we looking at for land use out there, what seems to make sense for the community, then we're going to have to decide, is it feasible or not? And that's still a big question as to whether it's feasible, but it's a start, and based on the information that I've looked at, and just again, looking for input from the commissioners tonight.
You picked a hard assignment for us for the first one, you're supposed to ease us into this.
I was going to ask you too, I mean, I don't know that it's the best ag land south, but I mean, is there any?
If stuff on the south side gets sandier, it improves, once you get, you start down, well, where my brother's got the beans in there.
Yep.
Once you start down about 20 feet from that grass line there, it gets better.
Okay.
There's kind of a ridge in there of that clay that runs through, but it definitely gets a lot better. And then they've pushed a lot of that clay out off onto the east side along Roar's over there. Because I don't know if you guys walked out past there, but once it gets over in behind Roar's on his property, they ran that catch basin out there and it drops off, there's Niagara waterfalls over there when it rains.
I didn't get into that.
But for the most part, it's quite a bit sandier on that whole south and east corner as you get down by Nolton's and everything. And it's a lot nicer for development. The two lots next to Barry Rober's old house there would take minimal soils work to straighten those out, and depending on what style of house you put in there, you put something in with a nine-foot basement, it's even going to reduce it more.
Right.
You know, and everything in the back runs downhill, so you know you're going to be shedding the water there, so.
Well, I think like you say, David, on the ag side, if.
That park is all clay, that's all clay in there.
I don't know if it wouldn't, as part of the consideration, because again, I think it's going to be a fair amount of time before anything develops on the Realport holdings. So maybe as an interim, if we're going to start moving dirt around there at some point, maybe that urban reserve area and as much as we can carve out of there, if we could get some reasonable productivity on ag land for some reasonable amount of acres, without doing too much investment. That's probably a good interim solution too, because this is just sitting out here just growing weeds, that's all it's doing.
Yeah, you just got your utility hubs on those five lots, I think there is there before you hit the park.
Yep.
And that great big pile that's along there is the topsoil that was supposed to get spread out on that park, and it just never did.
Okay.
That's all topsoil on that one pile there.
Okay.
So I could grade that out, and you're only going to have two to three inches once you spread it out, but grow grass on it anyway.
Yeah.
Make it look, you're not going to sell it with it looking the way it is, you know.
And I think that's, I mean, Goodyear County, I think, is recognizing, they told you before, that. For them to think that this can just be sold and we'll all be good, I think they're starting to maybe see it a little bit more from our perspective, that if there's going to be any development out there, there's some messes that have to be cleaned up first, and exactly how much money those cleanup messes cost is a question, but. I think at the end of the day, they've at least agreed with us, this is a long, long-term proposition.
Yeah, I think on that lower cul-de-sac, if it was me, I would be comfortable putting houses on there without major restoration and major land work.
Talking over here?
No, up on the, the stuff down on Valley Court down there.
Up in here, yep.
Those.
Yep.
I think it would be in the city's best interest to get those online as fast as we could. As long as you keep your houses up, up on, across, I don't know, from Sandstone Ridge to the north there, that project, Dave made a couple of them guys dig to China and then fill it back up with sand. Because that was the prescribed method to fix it, and it's not very cost-effective, and if the city takes and makes. Everybody do that on that project up there for the solution for the same thing, it'd be 100 years before anybody can afford to build in there.
Right.
And there is some other solutions to that. You know, with keeping the house up out of the ground and, you know, different foundations and stuff like that, different building techniques, and then you got to go in and put a covenants in about your sprinkler systems and rain gutters and a few other things that you tie it right into the. Covenants for the property where they have to have it, and it's got to be working order. I'm confident that that lower cul-de-sac, I think there's five or six lots down there, you could get them online. We've got our wear code on the street.
Right.
You know, it's easy access into town.
Right. And I think if, and it's just me, it's because Goodyear County's got about as much to say as this is anybody. My view is, let's take that scenario as something that might be able to be worked on and move forward. If those lots are sold, my suggestion would be that we just retain the lot sale proceeds and put them aside in a separate fund for the cleanup of these other areas as we go, because again, this is going to be a long-term proposition to do that.
You know, rather than spend the money, you know, have some coming in before you get rid of.
Right, right.
Break the bank.
Right.
And there's some of those lots up on top, like right across from, oh, where they just. By your place up there, where they just redid the streets and everything, there's like three lots across there by Nolton's, and I don't know why you couldn't build a house on any of those right now, today.
Yeah, those right here.
Yep.
You know, the sewer and waters are all stuffed in and.
Right. Right. So I think, like I say, it looks like, at least on the surface, that there is some near-term potential private development, at least on the single-family side, you know, we've got to investigate a little bit further here on some of those lots in particular, but.
On the one part, really all the street needs up there by Rober's is the wear code put on it, and you could postpone that wear code until you got three, four lots sold up there to reduce some of the cost on that too. Or tie it in with another project when we're redoing the streets in town on something else to put it in.
Yeah, and that'll be the question if, I mean, this is a long, long way up here from Cedar Hills down to 20, or to 4th Street.
Plus you're bringing, you know, if you sell 10 lots up in there, you're bringing 10 more people down through there by Dr. Holti's to get on 24, and you might want to explore the option, at least. Maybe you don't put the wear code on, but you get everything tuned up going through the rest of the development.
Right.
Just to the stop there.
Right. Yeah, because we could do.
Kids use it all the time anyway, so.
We could do some interim things, again, if it stays in this utility quarter, we could do some interim steps there with gravel or whatever, because there's going to have to be some reworking of those streets, so. Like I say, beyond land use, the key to this whole thing is going to be the financial plan and how much money it's going to take and when.
I'm a little skeptical of labeling anything park up there, other than the what already is, I mean, it's too far away from anybody in town anyway.
I'm taking away in this concept, I'm taking this park away, just saying, okay, that three acres or so is gone, see if we can find some other alternative, maybe an interim use in here, and that's just a fill use, it really is, I mean, I'm not saying that there's any particular demand for that right now. But there's been conversation about a larger community park in that area, there's certainly land up in that area to do it, is it the best place? I don't know.
It's something more like ball fields and.
Could be ball fields, or, yeah.
Community type.
Yeah, yeah.
I guess for that, then, as far enough away from everything, you're not going to make a lot of people mad.
Yeah. Right, right.
Move a football field up there so that the highway department isn't complaining about the traffic down there on 19 all the time.
Right, right. So like I say, I'm not personally convinced that multifamily alone, like we talked before, I think there's probably, without getting all the soil information, there's certainly some pockets of development opportunity within that seven or eight or nine acres, whatever it turns out to be. Where one ought to be able to find some spots for some multifamily development at some hopefully reasonable cost, but without knowing those soil conditions there, it's really kind of a shot in the dark right now, and maybe. At the end of the day, if there's only a relatively small area that can accommodate private development, whether it's multifamily condos, townhouses, whatever, should the rest of it be public land? I don't know.
We don't get any income off of it.
We don't get any income out of it, no, no. So that's a cost, that's all cost. But again, from land use, it's kind of taking what we've got and trying to figure out, is there an alternative for it? I'm just not confident that all of that land, whether there's going to be a market or the physical economic potential of developing it all for multifamily, I wonder about that, because again, we've got, we're already in a noticeable financial hole, and if we want to say that that's all gone, it's never coming back, that's one thing, but that's not the message I'm getting from the council. So it's going to take some more investment to, I think.
Yeah, well, you're going to. I probably shouldn't say it, but the engineering staff is going to have to get on board and be a little creative about their thoughts as far as what to do up there, and it could be, it's very doable if that would happen.
We're, like I say, because Goodyear County is involved with this project with us. That I think we're going to get some more views here and more opinions here, and at the end of the day, what we really have to know is, what have we got out there and what's it going to cost to develop, and what's a reasonable solution, and we will have differing thoughts about it.
Bowlin or whoever it is over there at Northfield.
Yep.
They have a pretty extensive file over there on it. And given about an eight-hour day, I could probably dig through all my archive stuff, and I have just about as much.
Okay. Yeah. Well, I wanted to share this with the commission tonight, it's a start, I don't think it's anywhere near the end, but I think what we know is the utility corridor is, seems to be a given. We've got some potential of doing some single-family homes out there, at least taking a much closer look at it, there's reason to believe we should take a closer look at that, and maybe that's the start, either on Valley Court, or maybe some of these, a few of these up here, we can, you know, I think we should look at those things.
There's a couple nicer lots up on top of the hill there.
Yep, yep.
Nicer houses make larger tax space.
Right, right.
And I think, Dave, you hit on it with your, shall we say, politically correct comment. SCH and some others are going to be a little more reasonable than we had, shall we say, in our past on how to take care of those lots.
I know there's a little bit of a different attitude amongst some of the people at the county that I've talked to on it previously, that they don't understand the hard line as. As it's been said so far, and when you take that hard line like that, that scares off the people that are coming in and spending the money, that causes a real serious problem, and that's my biggest objection to the whole thing, it just greets me the wrong way.
Well, I mean, from my view, and I wasn't here at the time, but you know, I look at County 25 and the considerable investment that was incurred to build that road, which provides access to this development as well as up on Mensings, you know, there's a lot of money spent.
Yeah, and you've got 24 right there now, I mean, it's around the corner.
Right, and we've got good utility service up there in terms of water pressures and sewer capabilities, I mean, there's been a lot of money spent, it hasn't necessarily all returned to the city, but I'm not of the mind to just say. It can't be done and it will never be done, and it's too expensive to do, I'd rather take more of a proactive look like you're suggesting, Dave, and say, are there some spots up there that we can make a go of this, if so, what are they, and let's get it going? But it's not without its challenges.
Right.
But like I say, I am encouraged that Goodyear County has said now, we agree, we need to work with Cannon Falls, if we're going to get anything out of this at the county level, we need to work with the city of Cannon Falls, and having them with us rather than against us is really going to be helpful, I think. So.
I think they're on board on trying to make something work.
Right, yeah.
Was kind of my sense of the conversation.
Yep, yeah, I wouldn't disagree, so we'll keep at it, but like I say, if you've got other thoughts as we move forward, let me know, this is a long ways from being cast in stone.
The two pieces that you have right there on 25, you're just kind of leaving those open to see what walks in the door sometime down the future then, or just?
I think what I'm viewing, Dave, is if there's some type of multifamily, public land use consideration over here, how does that fit within the rest of this, and I think, you know, if this is going to be a single-family area, that's obviously a single-family area. We don't know what's going to happen south of here, and I'm not, quite honestly, not worried about that right now, I'm really not, if I could find an interim use, if we could get some agricultural crop out there, and that was what we had for the next how many years, that's fine, if it's not a tremendous expense to prepare that. So I'm okay with, at this point, designating that as consideration for some multifamily or. So I'm okay with, at this point, designating that as consideration for some multifamily or, or public open space. I'd like to know more about the soils. I'd like to know more about, we gotta take everything out that's there. If we do, what does it cost? Um, are we gonna abandon the, the, the cul-de-sac over here and the utilities that are, that are, that are already there? If so, does it make sense to do that? Should we leave them there? I mean, I, I think we got a little project on, on both of these sites to really assess, is that the best alternative? And if it is, um, I think we could talk to some people and say, after we do a little bit more homework here, to talk to some people and say, hey, here's, here's what we got, now you look at it. What do you think?
I think his idea with getting started on the most viable areas too, though, is, is a-
Right.
A very good idea, at least see what the market is gonna do.
Right.
Do, with kind of your numbers, has any, have you sat down with the pencil? What do we have to have out of each of the lots that you've kind of delegated or figured we can do something with? What to recoup some of our, do we have?
Do you like as much as we can get?
Yeah.
Yeah, I-
I know what the market a bear, so that's, that's a, I'm trying to be politically correct in saying, how much does the city have to have, so then you know how much?
Right, right. You know, I, I haven't had that conversation, in all honesty, with the council members. And again, Goodhue County's gonna weigh in on this too. What we know is that we're in a relatively noticeable hole in terms of lost assessments. Are we gonna get that back? Some, all, now, never, somewhere in between? That's a real roll of the dice. I, my message to the council will be, I think we've got to come back to the market realities. And if we're down here and we've got some lots, and let's say they are ready to go, what can we price those on i- in this, in this market? And of that price, how much is gonna be going back against the utility costs? And, and we're gonna have to kind of figure that out with the council, I think. I, I think to, 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 at, at this stage where we're at, to think that we're gonna get all that money back, uh, through some development is, it's a distant thought of mine right now.
Well, activity is first activity.
I have to be realistic. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If you get something going here or across 25, if something happens over there, they're gonna complement each other.
Right. Right.
And they don't have the best soils to work with on the other side of the road either.
Right, um, so.
Fortunately.
Right, I, I, more so than returning revenues against the assessments, my concern is more what might have to be invested to kind of prop this development up, so we have a fighting chance to get lots sold and development to occur.
About 10 per lot.
And that's, that's the bigger question, because it's gonna be difficult to go back to the council or to the county board and say, okay, here's our plan to make this happen. We've got to have this much more money invested in this, in this property and trust us it'll work. That's a tough sell, I'd say.
Yeah.
So it's gonna be balanced, I think, by, by the realities of, of the market. But if we can pick off, as Mark was saying, and you said, if we can pick off kind of the low-hanging fruit here and maybe get some things going, that will certainly make everyone a little bit more comfortable in going further. But to go back to the county or this, or the council right now and say, gee, we've looked at this and in order to implement this plan, it's gonna take X thousand dollars to do it, and let's all be happy and make that investment and build it and they will come.
Well.
Takes a little bit of, a little bit of vision and hope.
Yeah, I'd do it in-
It takes faith, Dave.
I'd do it in steps. I wouldn't, I'd try and get a few of the lots sold and I'd worry about the wear code a little bit later on and make some of the necessary improvements to kind of get in and out, make it where the school bus can make a full circle up there and not do the six-point turn. Solve some of those problems right off the bat. You're not gonna have to dump a ton of money into it either.
And, and we may, as I said, between Goodhue County and the city, we may have some opportunities here to take on some of those smaller incremental steps in terms of moving dirt and, and, you know, fixing this and fixing that. You know, it's a cost to both of us, the county and the city, to do that. But if we can, if we can get some success and we've got a plan that maybe has a fighting chance of being implemented.
I know Mr. Pagel likes running that mower. Get somebody up there to mark all the sewer and waters.
Right, right. So, yeah, I'd-
Nice work.
It's gonna be incremental and I think we, we've got to pick our spots and, and see if we can get some things going there and, and move it in a direction that we've got some success and we see some results. So.
Has there been any contractors asking about it at all?
No, no. I mean, the last two-
Making such a bad hit as far as P R over the last five years, it's just terrible.
And the last two sales, we've, quite honestly, on the city side, have, have stood in the way of the county selling any lots, to a certain degree. I mean, there is, there is the, the history here. Uh, but to, to buy lots cheap enough, they'll get sold. Our position was, until we've got a plan, we weren't interested in having the county just start selling these lots off one by one. That wasn't something that we were interested in. And now the county's on board with, with us on that. And so they didn't sell any lots. The last two, time out, the times that they went out, then nothing was sold. They had some inquiries.
But we should be able to come up with a start of a plan, so we can free up some of those lots and get, get something going in the short term.
Right, right.
Right.
The county wants a plan. The county's big disagreement with the city was, not that the city council, speaking about the council, not that we necessarily wanted all this property back. It's not that good a deal to us, but at the-
Rumor mill has.
Yeah, but, but at the same time, we didn't want the county just selling off these lots to whomever. And, and in our opinion, potentially further reducing the opportunities to fix this. By having more lots sold for whatever the county can get, and then we've got to deal with it. We, we didn't want that. But under the state law, the city can take this property back and control it, but we have to submit a plan. And we never really submitted a plan that had any real validity to it, and it didn't have a lot of weight to it. And so the county said, that's no plan. So we can submit you a plan, but we can't implement it. What do you want? So we, kind of this back and forth thing between us and the county. I think if we have a plan, where even if it's, if it's a partial plan of certain areas, I think the county will listen now. And they'll say, okay, let's, let's work through this and let's start getting these, these properties, whatever we can, developed in accordance with a plan. We haven't had a plan, other than, don't sell them. Give, give, give that property back to the city. And, and it wasn't a detail they're strong enough proposal to the county where they felt comfortable in turning it back to the city.
I think if the county's involved in it, we hit, we have a little bit more reserves to work with also as far as even just manpower and equipment and need of materials or-
Yep.
It, it makes sense to have it a joint effort, to me.
Right.
As part of the plan. Everybody benefits that way, so.
Yep, and, and I think the county's on board now with that too.
And the longer it sits there growing like it is, it's, one of these days it'd be, be on repair and they're taking everything out.
Right.
All of it, without any use. It's just like letting a house sit there with nobody in it.
Right.
Brand-new house goes downhill in a hurry.
Right. Alrighty. Okay. Thank you for that. The final thing I've got, which is just for informational purposes, is if you haven't had a chance to go out and visit the south corridor, um, it's open.
I've been out there a couple times. Looks like a sign farm out there. How much of a trail are we responsible for?
Nothing at this point.
It's all?
Yep.
All county, all city, all state?
State, yeah. Yep.
Cause there's just about as much trail as there is.
There is. There is. And that's not ours.
Come winter, they're gonna be taking care of that, then?
Yeah, yep. Yeah, it's not our, it's not our jurisdiction, not our, our improvement, so. So we'll, uh, the, 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 the street signs, uh, have not been installed yet. Those streets have had to be renamed. This has been going on for more than two years, contrary to what some of the property owners have said. But when Goodhue County built the new, or is in the process of building the new southeast collector bypass road, they had decided some time ago that there was gonna be County 24 Boulevard. And we said, gee, that's neat. Um, what are we gonna do with the existing County 24 Boulevard? Willow Trail and other names were generated through the planning process, primarily through Goodhue County and, and Cannon Falls Township. We really, as a city, I mean, 318th was already there, 320th was already there. It was extended, uh, west to hit 63rd Avenue. Willow Trail was 24. We've got a little piece of Willow Trail that's in the city, very little piece. Forest Street South, that was 24. And the agreement was that all the way from downtown Cannon Falls coming south, uh, would, the, the street name would be Forest Street South. So that's the biggest part of the whole improvement that's already within the city, but it was in the city before. So largely, this wasn't our project. And we tried to let the property owners know and Mendat and Goodhue County and Cannon Falls Township that, you know, if, if you want us to, to do all this in your jurisdiction, just tell us. If not, then do it. And ultimately, it's getting done. The addressing, which I'm sure you, some of you have heard about, with the change of names and the annexed area to Cannon Falls, uh, those numbers are also being changed, which always garner some attention from the property owners, which we've heard about. But, but for the Highway 52 project, none of this would have happened. And, and we're dealing with it now. And we've tried to impress upon particularly Mendat that, you know, it's not the city. So the wrath of the property owners, even though many of them have directed it to the city, this is not our product, not our jurisdiction. We've cooperated, we've worked as, as, as efficiently as we can to work on the names and the addressing and the street signs and getting all this done. But at the end of the day, very honestly, we're, we've been a little bit disappointed that there's been some, uh, dropping of responsibilities along the way on getting some of this signage done. And believe me, we've heard about it. So, the street, street signs will be, will be going in as, as soon as all of the, the signs arrive. The temporary, the, the orange and black signs that you've seen out there that are identifying currently some of the existing businesses, those came in last Friday. Not everyone is satisfied with those, but that's a Mendat decision, that's not ours. We have no jurisdiction on that. So that's done. There's gonna be some more blue and white, uh, the lodging gas signs that you see. Those signs start south and north of the city and, and are at the entrances of the, of the interchange. There will be some additional, uh, signs, directional signage, so that when you're, when you're getting off or on the, the roundabouts, you can kind of an idea where the lodging facilities are by the blue and white signs. There's a logo sign program that's a cost participation sign by the business owners who qualify under state law to have a logo sign. A number of the businesses have. You've seen those in other interstates, Expressways, McDonald's, Super America, da-da-da-da-da. Not everyone can have those. Uh, but those who want them and are allowed to have them, they pay for those. And those will be installed sometime early in October, we're told. And that's done by contract. The state of Minnesota contracts with a sole provider who's been in communication with a number of the businesses in town who are interested in this sign. And they basically, uh, order place, um, those signs in behalf of those businesses, but, but those businesses will pay for it. And it's not inexpensive. So there will be logo signs as well. The other sign is that we talked about at the last meeting, or maybe the last couple of meetings, is we talked about the Red Wing signs, the Community Destination signs and the AT. We're making a stronger effort to see if we can get Mendat to help us, not just with considering that kind of signage and planning for that kind of signage, but probably also paying, uh, for a consultant to help us with that. And there's been a little bit of, uh, disagreement on that, I will say. And our position continues to be that this Highway 52 project is not our project. We wouldn't have this challenge if it wasn't for the Highway 52 project. And we think Mendat ought to help us work through this issue with signage. And I, I think there's some listening ears, but they haven't, uh, offered to, to participate yet. But, uh, I think what's, what's happened here with all of the frustration and anxiety that's been expressed, particularly in the last couple of weeks, from the business owners out there to the elected officials, there's certainly an awareness from our representatives about the concerns on signage. And we're certainly talking, uh, to them as well about our frustration that we don't have jurisdiction, as we talked before, in a lot of these roads, as a city. And yet we've got people that want signage. And signage under Mendat is fairly heavily regulated. Well, it's more than fairly heavily regulated, it's really regulated. And to, to be able to identify the historic downtown, to be able to, to, to direct people to other points of interest that aren't specific businesses that are allowed signage, is really tough to do. When Mendat controls all of Highway 19 east-west through the community, they permit all that. We don't. As I told you before, we can only permit, you know, from, from Highway 19 downtown south now along the north, the new Forest Street. We can do that to a degree when we get down here. But we don't have a plan that, that takes all the signage that you already see, some of the new signage that you're going to see, including the logo, and try to come up with something that makes sense, that complements that and effectively guides people with additional signage. There's new signage on those roundabouts that I never saw anywhere else until they were installed, which makes sure that we continue to go the right direction. Uh, I think there's 12 of them. And so we're, we're trying some things with the highway department to, to impress upon them that we'd like some help with, if we're gonna have additional signage like Red Wing or something under that kind of program. We'd like not to have, to have me go to the city council and say, gee, by the way, we'd love to have the council budget X thousands of dollars to help us plan, uh, this signage, because quite honestly, uh, I'm pretty certain what the answer's gonna be. And it's who created this problem and who created the need to do this? State of Minnesota? Why aren't they paying? So, we're gonna keep after it, but it's, it's gonna take some additional time. But meanwhile, the logo signs will be coming in October. And, uh, if the additional blue and whites haven't been installed yet, they will be installed soon. And then from that standpoint, Mendat is done.
If I may, um, what happened on, and I may have missed this, what happened on the safety study with the on-off?
Not done yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of you? I'm sorry.
Yeah, no. Not, good question. Not done yet. We saw for the first time about two weeks ago, maybe week and a half, two weeks ago, several concepts that our engineer designed for consideration by Mendat that would create, recreate access onto, onto 24 and 52. So they're at the point now where there's some design ideas being shared between our consultant, going through the process with the highway department. I'm guessing we're still a month, two months out before we get any kind of firm response back from, from, uh, our engineer and, and the state. But again, even if there's something that Mendat says looks reasonable and that they might permit if it's ever requested to be permitted, we're still a year or two easily before something can be built, so.
Then it would all have to be made by the city again.
Really?
Right, right.
Sure.
So there's not a near-term answer, Mark. I mean, that's, that's where we're at. Nothing's gonna, I mean, the accesses are closed. They're gonna stay closed, maybe forever. Maybe if there's a, a, a design option that comes out of the safety study that looks realistic and potentially feasible for the city to take on. If that, if that happens, maybe it gets built in the future. But it's, it's, it's definitely a noticeable impact in terms of traffic patterns for those who have been out there. And the business owners will tell you the same thing.
I bet you you've gotten a call or two online.
I've gotten a few.
Well, you know, right now, that is actually compounded by the road construction. I, I've been driving that road every day for, you know, last four days, I guess. And it, uh, it's really something. The one day, the traffic was backed all the way up to Wagner Hill. It was stopped back there. I was stopped all the way back there, probably the first time I think I can ever remember.
It was up to 86 out here one day too.
Yeah.
Well, more, more than one day. More than one.
Yesterday was bad too.
It was all the way back to the hill one day.
That's what I do. You know, and, and I don't know, I, I think a fair amount of it, in the, at least in the evenings, there is just the people commuting on the highway. And, you know, people commuting on a highway. If I already see cones in a one particular stretch of road, if, if I don't have to stop there, I'm not gonna. You know, if, if they're not, if their destination isn't Cannon Falls, I think they're just saying, well, I don't wanna get off, 'cause I'm gonna have to get back into this. I don't want to get off because I'm going to have to get back into this.
Right. There's not an easy way to get back because nobody wants to backtrack.
Yeah. Well, yeah. But that blacktopping, ever since, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday last week and Monday of this week, I had it solved. So, I mean, I got to drive it. But, you know, I did take the roundabouts one day. But to be honest, usually I just catch 19 because I figure I don't have to. I don't know. It's a, there's just a lot of them in a very small section of space. You know, I think that's primarily, at least for me, why I don't, you know, I mean, I already know that the one coming into town, I can't just get on that first roundabout and be headed downtown. I got to head over this way and come back that way.
Take a right and a left.
See? Look at...
A right, a right and a left.
Plus, the speed limit is, you know, even with the construction, it's 55 all the way to 19.
Have they had a lot of inquiries about building permits in this area now that we know what the landscape looks like?
We've had some building activity, but very honestly, the new construction still seems to be, at least on the commercial side, we've got some industrial projects, but on the commercial side, still kind of waiting to see what's going to happen with this safety study and where everything's going to fall out here. I think with time, things are going to balance out here a little bit, but it's probably in the near term not going to be traffic like it was, at least on the east side. That's pretty clear.
Well, it's like Dave said, you don't want to backtrack when you're getting off there in the fashion that they've got it set up now. Anything that's in an existing business area now, I mean, people have to want to get off and have to want to go back to get on.
Right, right.
I mean, I'm sure that when Coates up there cut that access, so now you got to get off by that overpass, I bet that affected that little gas station up there, too. I mean, you can still get back on going north, but...
It still slowed him down.
It's going to be busy by the Oxford Sportsman's Club, too. It's going to get people cutting across. It's the only place you can cut across. It's going to get busy.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, it's going to take some time to kind of sort out for the existing property owners and businesses and the traffic flows and getting people comfortable and...
Yep.
But I think that the new developments that we'll probably be seeing in the future, I don't think it's going to be a flocking to Cannon Falls right now. I think we're going to have a few here and there. But it's not the kind of project that, it's not really changing the demographics of the community, you know? So it's the same freeway, it's the same traffic that we had before, just with different access. So until the market expands beyond what it is today and what it's been the last few years in a more meaningful way, we're not going to probably see, you know, significant new development out in the south 52 corridor, at least in my estimation.
I think as soon as eighty-six gets done up there, there'd be some good marketing going on. Or we should be working on it right now for the north side of town.
Right.
I think that's the area that's going to have the most potential. Nothing we can do with what's here now.
Right, right. And speaking of that, there will be an open house tomorrow night here on the County eighty-six project.
Really?
Not suggesting you all have to be here. I don't think that it's really changed from the design that you've seen they proposed. But they're going to be here tomorrow just to kind of give an update on schedule and timing and funding. And as near as I can tell, Dakota County's still planning on looking at construction of that project next year. So... But they'll be here tomorrow. I think it starts at 5:00, I think, and I'll be here to just kind of check in, but...
Acquire practice.
You're excused.
Got to be back in Northfield at 7:00.
All right. I'll bring your brochure.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Was that the planning commission member comments portion or does somebody have something else they want to say?
Have you paid attention to how the sidewalks, the handicaps come across up there or out there on the south end by the bridge? Because that one comes up on the west side and it slants into the road, but there's, you can't go across to the other side of the street to go on the sidewalk across the bridge. There's no way to, if you're handicapped.
No handicap grant.
Oh, yeah. No, I guess I haven't looked that closely. I've been a little bit confused by where the crossings were placed. But I haven't looked any closer than that. I haven't got out of the vehicle and looked, but...
No, I just noticed it just from driving through there. It comes off on the south side of the street into the street and then the sidewalks on the north side of the overpass. So there's no way to get from that south side across to the north side to get on, if you're handicapped.
Okay.
No, I'm just talking. Yeah, yeah. I don't know. I just was curious.
Yeah. No, I haven't looked at that yet, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's all I've got unless there's questions.
I think we should get an easier project than Sandstone.
We didn't agree on what I don't think.
I didn't. I tried to help it out as much as I could and I ran out of money.
That's what you get for being a nice guy, right?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion, Ken.
I've got a motion from Mr. Price and a second by Mr. Hammer. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion to adjourn passed.
That's it.